Hello.
Hello, I am Vice Mayor Betsy Nash. Welcome to the February 11th regular City Council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating virtually and in City Council chambers. Please note, public comment speaker time may be limited if there are more than 10 speakers on an item. Roll call. I would like to introduce City Council members and staff present. Mayor Drew Combs is joining virtually using provisions from the Brown Act, and he will be joining about 6:30 tonight. In the City Council chambers are myself, Vice Mayor Betsy Nash, City Council members Jeff Schmidt, Cecilia Taylor, and Jennifer Wise. Staff present include City Manager Justin Murphy, Assistant City Manager Stephen Stolti, City Attorney Nira Doherty, and City Clerk Judy Heron. City Clerk Karen, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor, and again echoing a welcome to our February 11th regular City Council meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda, after the Vice Mayor calls on for public comment on the item he wished to speak, if you are participating via Zoom, we ask that you engage that hand feature. If you're calling in, pressing star nine to raise your virtual hand. And if you're in person, you can complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me here at the clerk's desk. I'd also like to remind folks that we are actively recruiting for two vacancies, one on our Environmental Quality Commission and one on our Library Commission. And that recruitment deadline is this Friday, the 14th, at 5:00 PM. Visit us at menlopark.gov/commissions. And that concludes my instructions. Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you, and I'd like to extend a warm welcome to the students of the Citizenship in Action class at Stanford. Agenda review. Agenda review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from City Council members. Does the City Council wish to pull any items from the consent calendar or informational items? Does the City Council desire to modify the order of any agenda item? Public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Speaker time will be limited if there are more than 10 speakers. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The City Council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. City Clerk Karen, please call for general public comment.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment for items not on tonight's agenda, if you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table, return to me here at the clerk's desk. If you are participating via Zoom, engaging that hand feature. And if you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. So this will be the final call for public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. All right, so it looks like we have a total of five speakers. And our first speaker will be Will Ausler, followed by Vasil Oras.
Good evening. My name is Will. I'm a resident of Menlo Park and a strong supporter of the Affordable Housing Project downtown. I'm here tonight because at the last meeting, many voices opposed the project during the public comment section. And I feel it's important to make sure that those of us who support the project continue to be represented. Forty-four percent of households in Menlo Park are renters, myself included. I'm fortunate to feel comfortable speaking my mind. Since January 14th, I've had conversations with several peers who have had very different experiences. One acquaintance told me about how intensely awkward it was to talk shortly after their landlord argued against the project. Others, I know, didn't feel comfortable coming to a divisive meeting because they feared retaliation. I think by now, we've seen all the mockups posted in downtown parking lots, huge terrifying red blocks crashing into our small businesses. We all know it wouldn't look like that, but I wanted to make it concrete and talk about a tall building that enhances a similar community rather than overwhelming it. I grew up in Ashland, Oregon, a small town with a walkable, vibrant main street. I moved here largely because Menlo Park's downtown reminded me of home. In Ashland, second-story apartments and homes just a block back make downtown a place where people live, not just a shop. Most buildings downtown are three stories or less. The only exception is the Ashland Springs Hotel, a nine-story historic landmark built in 1925. It was once the tallest building between Portland and San Francisco. You can see it from almost anywhere in town. And far from overwhelming the community, it's become a beloved part of Ashland's character. In fact, most photos of Ashland center on it. Ashland, like many cities today, faces housing challenges. Nobody has all the answers, but I do know this. The status quo is not working. We have to be willing to move forward. Tonight, too many people are living in empty parking lots. No one will be able to live in empty promises or broken housing elements. When this project comes before the City Council again, I urge you to move forward on your commitments with due haste. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Vasil Oras, followed by Colette.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Vasil Oras. I was out of the country for the last two meetings. And now I just want to express my stand in regard with the high-density housing in downtown Menlo Park, in the shopping center. It's not a 50-50 issue. It's not even a 60-40 issue. It is a 90-to-10 issue. Ninety percent of the residents are against the high-density housing in the shopping district. They are not all racist. They are not all NIMBYs. I think they just use common sense. We are not... Housing is used to make us look bad. Oh, you are against housing. It's not about that. We need hospital beds, but we will not put them in the middle of a shopping center parking area, more than we need housing. And it just make... If you speak your mind about this, you are viciously attacked by 10% of people which are not even living here. They are professional activists, most of them. Some of them, they hate cars. They want to take them off the streets. Some of them, good-hearted people for housing, yes, I understand. But if you really care about housing, you will spend the energy and the money in a place where this housing can be achieved. In my opinion, to fight 90% of the town, it's not the smart way of using our resources. That's why I urge you to consider alternatives, because this might not work. We've been told, oh, the downtown will become more vibrant. Why Stanford Shopping Center is not building high-density housing in their parking lots? Because it will kill the shopping district. It will happen the same. We depend on 100,000, 200,000 shoppers. We cannot have 1,000 people move in and all the business will be great because it will block... This is not just downtown. It's the shopping district. This is called downtown also. The civic center. It's not like we don't want it. It's in downtown. It won't interfere with the functionality of the business district. And I urge you to consider this. It's not like we don't want housing. Because my family, my friends, they will need low-income housing. But we don't have to destroy something in order to create something. We have to be careful. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Colette, followed by Bill Kirsch.
Hello?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay. I'm asking the City Council for transparency when it comes to the downtown housing proposal. The other day, I spoke to a few Menlo Park teachers from Hillview School, and they knew nothing about the proposed downtown project. And they questioned the logistics. In fact, one teacher, who's a single mother, asked me if she would qualify for the housing. And I said, no, you would not. You actually make too much. I also spoke to various Menlo Park firefighters and police officers, and they have stated that they have not been consulted when it came to the proposed downtown housing projects. This is a huge project that needs planning and time. It will impact many lives, and it needs to be well-thought-out and not rushed or simply pushed through, as Jeff Schmidt said at the last meeting, to push things through because we do not know about the next administration. We need the elected City Council to listen to all those that are affected, not just those with the loudest voices. We need the City Council to reopen the discussion of the affordable housing project to be placed at the civic center where it makes the most sense. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and our next speaker will be Bill Kirsch. Bill, give me just one moment to bring up your slide.
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. City Council members, Vice Mayor Nash, thank you for your service to the city. I know you all have a lot on your plate. I want to shift gears to the Middle Avenue Slow Streets Project and how it's impacting the streets that are parallel to Middle, those being Partridge, the street that I live on. I'm Bill Kirsch, by the way. I served eight years on various commissions. And the other parallel street that is impacted is College. Now, we are in favor of all of the interventions, slow-street interventions going on in Middle Avenue. They're fantastic. And to give you some context, tomorrow night, the city staff will be presenting an update to Complete Streets Commission on the next phase on Middle Avenue. We are supportive of those interventions. It'll make it a beautiful street, a slow street. But the problem that it's creating is it's pushing traffic, cut-through traffic via Arbor and University Drive onto Partridge, which is our street. And you can see it here. It's a straight shot, a third of a mile. We have nothing on our street to slow cars down. The next street over is closer to Middle is College. They have the same problem. There are some very simple interventions that the city can do. I talked to Kevin Chen before he left the city. He promised that the city would do a comprehensive study of the whole area here, these parallel streets, to make sure that anything they did on Middle or any other street would not impact the other parallel streets. That study was never done, and we are getting heavily impacted by cut-through traffic. So here, this mockup created by Laura Milan that lives on College, you can see on the left, the brown sign. That is what San Francisco MTA is using. That is a $250 sign telling traffic to slow down. It takes 10 minutes to install. And then the little gates on each side there, that's what we did in West Menlo and the unincorporated area. You can go out there and look on Sherman or Cloud, and they slow traffic entering our streets. We would... Our community, our residents, would like to take back our street from speeding traffic. And I just ask city staff to come out and spend one hour visiting our site and see if we can work together because the Middle Avenue interventions are impacting us. Thank you.
All right, and our final speaker is displayed as iPad 6. So if you could state your name for the record, please.
Mary Seaton. Mary Seaton.
Great, thank you, Mary. Go right ahead.
Okay. The downtown parking lot housing plans are not realistic, not feasible, not practical, and most of all, not safe. The way the lots are configured, there is not adequate width on any of the three lots for housing. We would need to eliminate all the perimeter buildings, businesses on Oak Grove and University Drive to widen the streets for proper and safe ingress and egress. It would not only be a congestion nightmare, but a safety issue for all of our first responders. This was brought up in the discussion at the January Fire Board meeting, and they were very concerned about the safety of their firemen and women and evacuation concerns. The way the lots are currently situated, sandwiched in between buildings on Santa Cruz Avenue and Oak Grove, it would only allow for two-story buildings. Are we going to destroy $80 million worth of parking spaces to construct 80 units? This is a far cry from the 365 to 425-metre units. The Civic Center provides ample space to build higher structures and planned areas of green space for recreation and possibly a steam center. Children and families need space so they can stretch their bodies and their minds. The downtown parking lots do not provide the space or the infrastructure needed, including water or sewer capacity to accommodate 600 to 750 more people, long before there can be RFQs, requests for qualifications or quotes on any given project. There needs to be thoughtful and thorough RFPs done, including surveying, infrastructure issues, safety issues that include recommendations or rejections of the suggested sites altogether. Sometimes, in the pursuit of what is right, we lose focus of the needs and requests of our residents in our community and ourselves. I'm asking the council to look inward and be forthright and transparent about their goals and their legacy. They will be commended for their efforts and honesty. The Civic Center makes sense on so many levels. We are all looking for common-sense solutions to the complex issue of affordable housing. Let's provide a location that our community can be proud of. There can be wonderful planned community with wide-open space and a great opportunity for a steam center at the Civic Center. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And that does conclude our hands and our cards. Did we have an additional in-person speaker for public comment for items not on the agenda? Okay, if you'd like, you can approach the mic and just state your name. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carmen Carrickio, and I've spoken in the past. But I'm also here because the downtown lots, although they don't seem to have been put on this agenda, are concerning. I feel like you guys just aren't listening. That's what I'm really concerned about, is that you've had hundreds of people tell you that this is not good for Menlo Park. They've stated the reasons why again and again. And yet, here we are, week after week, and you guys are moving forward with your RFQ. We've not heard that you've really... That you're making a real effort into looking at Civic Center. And I'm just wondering to like, to what end? You know? What is it going to take to get you guys to listen that the community does not support this? And you are supposed to be representing the community. So I'm hoping that tonight's meeting, this will be discussed again by the council members, that we will have some clarification on when we will hear about the Civic Center potential for development. I'm... We're all very disappointed that the request that was brought up by the Mayor, Mayor Combs, was, you know, shot down essentially, which was to take the RFQ off the table until we have done the necessary research and identified the potential for other sites. But that was unfortunately by some of the other members who were here tonight, was rejected. And I'm just... I guess I'm just flabbergasted that you've heard so much of an outpouring from the community, and we're in the same spot that we are, week after week. I'm just wondering, what is it going to take? Because this is not a community that's going to stand back and just get railroaded over while this happens. This is a community who has... We have the education. We have the constituency. And we're going to see this through because it's what's best for Menlo Park, not to destroy our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and now seeing no further hands or cards. Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you. So going on to presentations and proclamations. Tonight, we have one presentation and one proclamation. First is a certificate of recognition for the Menlo School Boys Cross-Country Team. City Clerk Karen, please call for public comment on item E1.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item E1, Menlo School Boys Cross-Country Team Certificate of Recognition, if you are participating in person, complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me here at the clerk's desk. Participating via Zoom, engaging that hand feature. If calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. And this will be the final call for public comment. Are you George? Okay, perfect. And actually, we'll be calling you up in just a minute to make the presentation. And I am seeing no hands or cards on this item. Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you. And here to introduce and accept the certificate of recognition is Director of Menlo Cross-Country and Track and Field Assistant of Menlo Girls varsity soccer, Jorge Chen.
So if you'd like to come up... Is it Assistant Director? Perfect. Great, great. Did you want to say anything about the...
Hello? Thank you so much. Super excited to be here and to have in the audience one of the greatest cross-country teams in California state history, in Menlo Park history. They went to the state championships and broke the course record for Division V. They then qualified for the Nike Cross-Country National Championships and competed up in Oregon. And just couldn't be more proud to be able to come back, represent the city, the community, Menlo School. And so, yeah, I'm just really, really excited and really honored that these boys are here tonight. And I appreciate all of the different supports that have got us to this point. Thank you very much.
Great. And I'd actually like to invite our City Council to come down. And if any of the team would like to come up, and you, we can get a photo with the certificate of recognition. Thanks.
The next item is item E2, Proclamation for Black History Month. City Clerk Karen, please call for public comment on item E2.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item E2, Black History Month Proclamation, if you are participating in person, completing a speaker card at the back table, returning to me at the clerk's desk. If you're participating via Zoom, engaging that hand feature. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. Okay, currently seeing one hand. So this will be the final call for public comment on our proclamation item E2. All right, and our speaker will be Jenny Michelle.
Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, and Honorable Staff, I'm Jenny Michelle, a native, born and raised here, living in D3, a recovering homeless teacher. Personal comments. We've gone from brat summer to Nazi winter. On Sunday, we got a reminder of why Black History Month is so important, an epic art performance by KDOT. The "I grew up here with white supremacist parents." My parent... My mother literally informed me that I was blessed to be born white, a superior race in her mind. She looked down on non-Christians and non-whites. But all the while, she chronically abused us, her children, fostered grooming for sexual assault by other family members, and embezzled tens of thousands of dollars from her family friends, AKA her clients, as a certified public accountant. She got caught and lost her license just before she died. Oopsies. She was not a superior race. She was sick and was a problem and lied to herself about it. I stood up to her and was physically punished for it. So to honor Black History Month this year as white people, it's incumbent upon us to look in the mirror, to declare that we have a white people... People... Sorry, white person's problem, we are the problem. Yes, you and me. Wherever we go, we create unsafe environments. Our model is to wipe life away. We sweep our homeless, our natives, our elders, our disabled, and chemically treat nature. Fannie Lou Hammer stated correctly that the flag is drenched in black people's blood. We, as white people, don't own this legacy of blood on our hands. We plan vacations and cry about parking in downtown. It's a disgrace and an insult. It's okay to be honest. We have to own our uncomfortable truths, including our white power or white weakness heritage. The game isn't about the code-switching to appease us whites. The game is about power and control. So let's abandon this power game and intentionally give power back to those whose blood has been spilled, who we take advantage of. Increase your employee's base wage by $10 an hour. Sell your vacation home or winery and donate it for affordable housing development. Let's stop being crappy people and hoarding resources. Let's keep our word and provide the economic opportunities we promised during the Reconstruction era. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And seeing no further hands or cards. Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you. This February, we celebrate Black History and Black Liberation, recognizing the cultural significance and resounding impact that Black and African Americans have had on the story of our nation. This year's theme, Black Americans and Labor, highlights the contributions of Black and African Americans in the workforce, the notion of which not only constitutes labor, such as factory work, the military, office work, public service, and hospitality, but also the vital community-building work of social justice activists, volunteers, caregivers, educators, homemakers, faith leaders, and artists. In each of these instances, the work Black people do and have done have been instrumental in shaping the lives, cultures, and histories of the societies in which we live. Understanding Black labor and its impact in all of these multivariate settings is integral to understanding Black people and their histories, lives, and cultures. We would like to introduce, to invite Phyllis Cooksey from Jonathan's Fish and Ships, a Menlo Park business for over 20 years, to accept the proclamation.
Vice Mayor, just learned that Phyllis was unable to join us, but she was recognized at our Black Liberation Celebration last year. We're having that, one of your businesses, it's an incredible contribution to our city. So we thank her and thank you.
Thank you very much. And I see Mayor Drew Combs has joined us. Welcome. So we will now move on to the consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on the consent calendar?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our consent calendar items, F1, a resolution to authorize the execution of a primary grant agreement. F2, the second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 12.18 related to the 2022 California Building Code standards. Or item F3, a resolution supporting the city's application for the shuttle program for fiscal years '25, '26, and '27. If you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table. Return to me here at the clerk's desk. If you're participating via Zoom, engaging that hand feature. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. And this is the final call for public comment on our consent calendar items, F1 through F3. Seeing no hands or cards. Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you. Is there a motion and second on the table to approve the consent calendar? Motion to approve. Second. City Clerk Karen, please state the motion and call for the vote.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I have a motion by City Councilmember Taylor and a second by City Councilmember Wise to approve the consent calendar. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
City Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
City Councilmember Wise.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
The next, we will move on to the study session. Study sessions are an opportunity for city staff to introduce an item that will require policy direction from the city council in the near future. City staff will provide a presentation. I will then call for public comment. After public comment, the city council will discuss the matter interactively with staff. The city council will not take an action on items addressed in study sessions. The city council may provide direction to city staff for preparation of additional analysis or information necessary when the item returns to the council for action. The study session item tonight is Consideration of Needs Analysis and Potential Strategies to Enhance Enrollment and Financial Sustainability at City-Run Preschool Facilities. Here to introduce the item is Library and Community Services Director, Sean Reinhardt.
Good evening. Thank you very much for taking the time this evening to discuss this very important study session item. Joining me here at the stand are our consultants from Solutionary Advisors. We have Catherine Carter and Tricia Singleton. I believe also Consultant Eric Buermeister is joining us virtually. So he's also available also here in the chambers tonight. From city staff are Natalia Jones, the Library and Community Services Manager, who oversees our childcare programs. And we have Akira Storms here, who's the Library and Community Services Supervisor, who supervises the day-to-day operations at Bell Haven Child Development Center. The supervisor of the Menlo Children's Center is currently out on leave, Sheriann Chaw. She'll be back in another week and a half or so. She's not present with us tonight, however, she also was very active in this report. So we're going to move into a presentation here, and then we're very much looking forward to the discussion with the city council. I'm going to try to work the clicker here. See, apologies for, okay, there we go. So the recommendation tonight is threefold. The staff is recommending that the city council review the needs analysis report in Attachment A, then provide direction to city staff on which of the potential strategies to develop for additional city council review and potential implementation. And those would be brought back for city councils review in the context of the fiscal year '25, '26 budget deliberations coming up a little bit later this year. I'm going to hand the next several slides over to our consultants, and then we'll kind of circle back to staff to wrap up and then move into the discussion.
Good evening, Mayor Combs, Vice Mayor Nash, and honorable members of the city council. I am a lead consultant and partner from Solutionary Advisors, and tonight we are presenting highlights from the city's report, "The Future of Early Learning and Care in Menlo Park." Over the past eight months, our team of local education experts, including former Menlo Park Superintendent Eric Buermeister, as you mentioned, is listening in, have focused on one driving question. How might the city of Menlo Park's early care and learning programs better meet the evolving needs of the community while ensuring the financial sustainability of the programs? Yeah, sure. There you go, is that a little better? Thank you. So our comprehensive study included contextual research for national and statewide trends and delved into Menlo Park preschool landscape. This research revealed significant shifts in the early learning and care infrastructure. The foremost impact is the implementation of universal TK for four-year-olds. California's master plan for early learning and care intends to enroll three-year-olds eventually, creating the possibility for more uncertainty. In addition to the state's efforts to expand care and education through the school systems, remote work policies, particularly for tech companies, and declining local birth rates have all impacted demand for early learning programs. Despite the decrease in demand, the San Mateo County is working to address a critical shortage of early-age childcare, particularly for our middle and lower-income families. In our, the detailed findings of all of our analysis, we can't cover today, but can be found in the data analysis section of the report on page 25 that you all have received. Through extensive community engagement, including the community needs survey with 627 respondents and 413 comments, preschool director interviews, focus groups with center staff and families, and childcare advocates insight, we identified common themes in the expressed needs of families. Affordability, flexible scheduling, infant care, toddler care, and better communication of quality care offerings. These five areas became the focus of our design process toward potential solutions for the community. My colleague Catherine Carter will now present specific strategies to address these community needs for the council's consideration. These community needs were used to identify high-leverage strategies that could be implemented to increase the enrollment at city-run centers. This was a collaborative effort with the whole city planning team and truly a design process that included our center directors as well. Affordability was the most significant need, especially for families who don't qualify for the state subsidy that's provided at Bell Haven. To address this need, the city may consider implementing sliding-scale fees for our middle-income families, as well as discounts for city employees and educators. Another option is a cooperative care model, where family members offset fees by working at the center. To address the community's need for flexible scheduling, the city may consider offering families with scheduling choices, such as a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or a Tuesday, Thursday option. Setting aside spaces for drop-in care would also increase families' flexibility in scheduling. Infant and toddler care is not only a need for families, it's a vital strategy that nearly all of the preschools in the community are now pursuing to maintain enrollment and financial sustainability. To keep up with the market, the city may consider opening up spaces for two-year-olds at Bell Haven, expanding the spaces for 18-month-olds at Menlo Children's Center, and/or adding infant care at one or both of the sites. And the final area of need we identified is the communication of quality care. Local research indicated a lack of awareness of the programs at the city-run centers, or rather, a very uneven awareness. Families with children enrolled at Bell Haven and Menlo Children's Center emphasize their trust in the staff and know about the quality of the program. But most of these families heard about the center through word of mouth. To ensure that all families across the city know about the quality of the two programs, the city might consider updating the website, hosting community events, creating new marketing materials, and using city communication channels like social media and newsletters to highlight the preschool programs and teachers. I'm now going to go into each of these areas of need in a little bit more detail. These are the highlighted strategies for affordable care. All of these options can be implemented at Menlo Children's Center. However, given the constraints of the state subsidized fee program, not all of them, such as discounts or a cooperative care model, could take place at Bell Haven. Our planning team evaluated these strategies based on their potential impact for increasing enrollment, as well as the effort to implement them, and the estimated timeframe. Providing sliding-scale fees for some middle-income families will likely increase enrollment by making care more affordable. Initiating discounts for educators and city employees may also impact enrollment, but it affects fewer families in the community. However, it's a straightforward strategy that would be a big benefit for Menlo Park employees. These strategies, both of them, could be implemented in a mid-range timeframe of six to eight months, 18 months, to allow for the design of fair and sustainable policies. Creating a cooperative childcare option would take more time, as even more planning is needed to ensure that all of the legal and licensing requirements are met and that families are trained to provide the same level of high-quality care. And as I mentioned, although this strategy could be pursued at Menlo Children's Center, it's not highlighted for Bell Haven because it would only be available to the very few families who don't already participate in the state subsidized program. Now I'm going to look at flexible scheduling, and we have two options for you to consider here. One is allowing families to choose days and schedules. This is a high-impact strategy that could be implemented pretty quickly at Menlo Children's Center, within the next six months. However, this flexibility can't be extended to Bell Haven, given the same constraints of the state subsidized fee program. Providing families with the option of earlier drop-off or later pickup times may also increase enrollment in the program, but it's very challenging to implement from a staffing perspective. And because of that, it would likely increase operating costs. So it wouldn't really impact overall financial sustainability, even if it brought in more students. Another strategy that could be considered is drop-in care. That's providing families with ultimate flexibility in scheduling. However, you would have to set aside spaces for drop-in care, and that means those slots wouldn't be available for full-time enrollment. Now I'm going to go into the options for how to serve younger students in our community. As you can see, these strategies related to expanding toddler and beginning infant care are estimated to have a very high impact on increasing enrollment because there's a significant community need. Expanding to serve two-year-olds at Bell Haven and doubling the slots for 18-month-olds at Menlo Children's Center can be done with some minor facility updates to serve this age group in existing spaces. But it's important to note that the license for two-year-olds at Bell Haven is provisional. It would need monitoring for updated requirements. And the Bell Haven license to serve 18-month-olds is only for 12 children. So a new license would be needed to expand that program. Likewise, if we wanted to go down to serving 18-month-olds at Bell Haven, that would require an entirely new license. Expanding to serve infants at either or both locations is a longer-term project as it requires modifying the facilities, creating new job classifications, training and hiring new staff, and then also obtaining a license from the state for infant care. This would also remove space that's currently dedicated for toddlers and preschools. So it would require a rethinking of facilities, pricing, and the financial viability of phasing in infant care. The final set of strategies I'm going to present falls under the area of communicating quality care. These are relatively low lift, but likely to have a pretty mid-range impact on enrollment. Updating the website and marketing materials and using the city's communication channels to promote the preschools are fairly low-effort but high-impact strategies that can help spread the word in the community and increase enrollment at the centers. Hosting and attending community events such as open houses at the preschools might be a little bit more effort, but would really positively impact enrollment. And if you want to see more details on these communication strategies, there's an appendix in the full report that details what they could each look like. Whatever direction the city council decides to take, it's important to approach these changes with an inquiry mindset. To do so, think about how the city will measure success and what continuous improvement steps will help the city in reaching its goals. While the strategies we reviewed can potentially increase enrollment, some of them would entail additional one-time, and some would entail ongoing costs to the city. After the city selects strategies for implementation, it's essential to determine each strategy's budgetary and staffing impact, and then evaluate the cost-benefit relationship. And if you'd like to see an example of what a phased implementation plan could look like for these strategies, you can go to page 55 of the full report for an example. It's important to set clear targets for these enrollment increases and what could be expected after each implementation phase. Progress towards the goals should be reviewed after the first phase, and if they're not met, strategies should be revisited and adjusted. We think this is an exciting moment for the city. By adjusting to meet the needs of the community around affordability, flexible scheduling, toddler and infant care, and improving communication around program quality, the city can increase access to quality care while fostering financial sustainability.
Thank you, Catherine and Tricia, for walking us through that overview. Just to kind of wrap up the presentation here, just to summarize the direction that the staff is hoping to receive from city council tonight is really about those potential strategies that have been identified by the research. And you can see them listed here on the screen. They're not in a particular order, although actually, they are in a little bit of an order in that the, the strategies that could be implemented in the short term are the first two on the list. And then the next several on the list could be implemented in the midterm. And then the final ones on the list of increasing infant care is a little bit more of a long-term strategy. So that's the order they're putting. So that's the order they're presented. So creating more flexible scheduling options at Menlo Children's Center, enhancing consumer awareness of the city-run preschools through marketing, creating a sliding scale that provides tuition assistance to middle-income families who do not qualify for other income-based tuition assistance, there's instituting discounts for city employees and/or local educators, creating a cooperative childcare option for some families that would really only be viable at MCC, not possible at BHCDC, expand to provide care to two-year-olds at BHCDC, increasing the slots for 18-month-olds at MCC, and then finally adding infant care that would be younger than 18 months, which we currently do not offer at one or both centers. And let's see, with that, that concludes the presentation portion. Again, we do have the site staff here as well to answer any questions that you may have, and we look forward to hearing your comments and feedback.
Thank you. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on this item?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our study session item G1, consideration of needs analysis and potential strategies to enhance enrollment and financial sustainability at city-run preschool facilities. If you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return it to me here at the clerk's desk. Participating via Zoom, engaging that hand feature, calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. Okay, looks like I currently have one hand raised, so this will be the final call for public comment on our study session item G1. Okay, we'll turn to our Zoom hand, and our speaker is Colette.
Hello?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, great. I just had a question, and maybe I have my nephew in the car, so I might have missed this, but is the preschool going to have a curriculum, or is it more like a daycare-type thing with like, where it's just more like childcare? That was my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and that does look like all of our speakers for this item. Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you. I would like to open for city council discussion now. And actually, I guess the first question is, could you please respond to the speaker's inquiry? Thank you.
Yes, I'm Kira Storms, the library and community services supervisor for the Bell Haven Child Development Center. And to answer the caller's question, both sites actually do follow a curriculum, and we follow the state's preschool foundations to be able to make sure that we are meeting state standards and that the children are being properly prepared for kindergarten.
Thank you. Would anyone like to open the discussion? Councilmember Schmidt?
Thanks. Maybe we'll open it with a confession and a basic question. So this isn't a subject I've been traditionally close to, three teenage boys, so they're well past this age. So as I read through this, could you just maybe help me understand? I was having a slight disconnect between the factors driving enrollment changes, so, you know, universal TK, work-life trans, things like that. It was a disconnect for me for some of the things we heard for affordability, infant and toddler care. So I guess I'm trying to understand the demand situation with a little bit more clarity because I could read this on the surface and think we have a lot of extra capacity, basically, but I don't feel like I'm reading that right. So could you maybe just spend a minute helping me really understand the, why are we trying to increase enrollment if it seems like on the surface we have an overcapacity issue? So anyway, thank you.
The overcapacity, if it is existing, is for four-year-olds at this time because the introduction of universal TK means that families now have a free option for four-year-olds. And traditionally, our centers have primarily served three- and four-year-olds, and not just our centers, preschools across the state. And what you're seeing happening here in Menlo Park is actually happening across the state. And a big hope from the state of California is that by increasing access to care through universal TK, that we will actually open up more spaces for younger students, for three-year-olds, for two-year-olds. That's the greatest area of need. As you heard, currently, the only center that we have that offers spaces for 18-month-olds is here at Menlo Children's Center, and there's only 12 slots. Those 12 slots are always full unless they're being turned over. Where we have the spaces is in the preschool program with the three- and four-year-olds. Is there anything you want to add to that, Kira?
No, that's fairly accurate. There's some other driving forces as far as, you know, affordability, affordability in housing in the area, affordability for care. So in options of people finding care, finding more affordable is always a big driver, especially when you're dealing with the new TK options that are available. We've also lost a lot of families due to just people moving out of the area due to affordability.
Thank you.
I did also want to mention that the strategies around flexibility are also strategies around affordability, and that's one of the other things that has changed in people's work-life. There are less people who work a traditional Monday through Friday, 40-hour-a-week, and can have their needs met by dropping their child off at 8:30 and picking them up at 4:00. And if you, right now, the only option is to sign up and pay for a five-day-a-week program. So offering something like flexible scheduling, where a family could opt into two days a week or three days a week, would support more families in being able to access care at an affordable price.
Mayor Combs?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash. So again, I know, looking at the different strategies, again, one is marketing, essentially a marketing strategy, and then some are just essentially strategies about lowering the price, right, you know, for different subsets of individuals, but lowering the price, which in theory, I think would exacerbate our current issue with relation to the cost recovery aspect of this and the fact that currently, as it relates to the Menlo Children's Center, this city is subsidizing the program in excess of $1 million a year. And so, but then, when you look at some of the strategies you're suggesting that may in theory offer the possibility of a, you know, financial posture that is more of a break-even, this sort of, you know, allowing for more kids at younger ages where you're no longer competing with the school districts. Have you seen other childcare facilities in the area make that transition and do it successfully? Like, right? And so, because to me, that's the question. As you've pointed out, again, with infant care, you know, 18-month-old, like, right, those are different licenses, more intensive. The pool of employees for that are smaller, the ratios are smaller. Like, have you seen other facilities in the area implement those strategies and it ultimately sort of solve the issue of under-enrollment?
That is a great question, and that was our first, one of the first pieces of research that we did was interviewing the preschool directors in our community and in nearby communities to see how they were handling this very same issue, and that's how we found everyone is having the same challenges. And I believe every preschool director that I interviewed, which was about 10, had all shifted to younger ages. So in the last, some of them this year that were in that space in this, the fall timeframe, were like, we'll see how it goes. We don't know yet, but we're trying it. So that does seem to be the avenue that most schools that are still around are, that's how they're staying afloat, is by having these younger children. That means they have to shift quite a bit in their rooms and in their staffing, and they are adjusting quickly based on what they have. And there are some schools who have closed, and those did not adjust, I'd say, to these younger ages.
And so narrowing in on that line of questioning, have we seen a childcare facility who was not offering infant care go through the process, like, right, licensing, build-out of, like, then transitioning to offer infant care? Like, have we seen that happen?
Yes, we have. I spoke with the folks at All Five, which is in the Ravenswood community, and they did exactly that. They started in older ages and then slowly brought in a few infants, I believe they were even saying, like, sticking with similar families that had other children already in their care. And they did it, it was a slow process to make sure they could get it right, to make sure that they could, you know, started with a couple of infants and then grew from there.
All Five's, correct me if I'm wrong, receives state subsidies, correct?
Yes. And also private funding, so they are, they have fundraising as a part of their model.
So a different business model?
It is a different business model from ours.
From MCC?
Yes. Another one is, is the Palo Alto, there's one in Palo Alto that started based in the city, and it's Palo Alto PACC Child Care Center, Palo Alto, I believe. And many people in the, actually in the comments of the needs survey, mentioned that. They said, why, can you do something like this, like they do in Palo Alto? So we looked into and spoke with folks there as well, and they have served toddlers in, in some cases, like in different locations, but within the same breadth of their program. They're also a different model. They started with the city and are now a nonprofit. So that's another option, but it's not, they started as a municipal, you know, sort of similar to what we have. There are a few others that are, you know, similar to this, but they have not gone to infant care so far. They're more looking in the same way of going just a little younger from the two- and three-year-olds to a little bit younger to now taking sort of that, or sorry, up to three-year-olds and then going down a little, and they're sort of making their way down age-wise so that they can make sure that they do it right and have their licensing correct.
One final question for this line. And so with all of the facility or, you know, childcare providers that you connected with, and so some are making this transition, maybe some have already made this transition, I mean, were there anywhere, for the most part, they thought that, like, what they offered or their capacity was, you know, availability was perfectly matched to the demands that they saw in the area, and they thought that they got them right, and they felt really optimistic about the future?
Mm-hmm. There were. There were several, I would say, something that stood out to me in, when I spoke with different schools and directors, was that schools that had a significant community-building aspect and education, like parent education, it sounds, it's not as technical as the educational piece of what they do, but they were educating their families around that, and a really significant piece, which is one of the reasons why we suggested that each center have an event that is community-building for their, for their current community and to invite people in from the broader community. And that's something that those directors and those schools worked very hard at because it is something that was limited for people in the pandemic, particularly for young families, was finding community, and that was drawing people into a vibrant community at a preschool. It doesn't mean that our preschools don't have that. It just simply means that that was something that they took time and focus on, and that was a characteristic that I noted from several of the successful schools that felt like they had a matched enrollment and with their number of spaces available. Does that answer the question and help a little bit?
It does. Thank you.
I wanted to just make sure we were using all the same language when we're talking about the different age groups, because it can be a little confusing. And so then when we're talking about infants, we're talking about children less eight, a year and a half or younger. So 18 months and younger. The highest ratio you can have for serving infants is four adults to one child. If it's a state subsidized program, it's three to one. So that is part of why, that's something that would need more time to figure out how to make it financially sustainable. When we're speaking about toddlers, we're speaking about 18-month-olds, and that would go to 24 or 30?
It depends.
Yeah, it gets a little confusing depending on licensing in the program. And currently, that is only provided at Menlo Children's Center, and they do have a license for it, but that's the program that's generally full. And then finally, when we talk about preschoolers, we're generally talking anywhere from two-and-a-half to three-year-olds, up to five. Traditionally, Bell Haven has started serving students at three. Right now, they have a provisional license that would allow them to start serving students at two, but there's no guarantee that the state is going to renew that license. Provisional pilot, provisional pilot. Thank you, Kira. Yeah.
You have to give that.
The other, the other thing to know is that for toddlers, the ratio is six to one if it's not a state subsidized program, and four to one if it is a state subsidized program. There are, however, some interesting workarounds that you can do that Kira was really helpful in explaining, where if you do mixed-aged classrooms and there's less than 30% of the students are two, you can keep that ratio at eight to one. So those are some of those intricacies that would need to be worked out to understand
Would anyone else like to ask some questions? Okay. Councilmember Wise?
Good evening. So I did notice, or you all said that there was a lot of interest in keeping particularly the Bell Haven Development Center open until 6 o'clock, but that the longer hours are not necessarily feasible due to staffing and costs. I noticed that that center opens at 7:30 and goes till 5:15. Is it possible to shift it, or is the 7:30 time also highly requested and in demand?
Most are fair families do start work fairly early, so that 7:30 to 7:45 slot does fill up fairly quickly.
I assumed as much, but I wanted to make sure. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Thanks. I had one kind of clarifying question and then just a data question. So I'm struggling a little bit to try to figure out, it feels like we're, it feels like, not us, but the ages are moving younger to whether there's a need there or whether it's to keep the preschools afloat. I mean, I'm struggling with that a little bit in my head because, I'll be really honest, like, 18 feels really young to put them in an outside environment. So I just love a little more context there about, you know, the, is the demand so high for 18-year-old childcare that, or, sorry, 18-month-old? so high for 18-year-old childcare that, or 18, oh, sorry, 18, 18-month-old, with the 18-year-old too? So, so that's, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with the, the kind of root causes underneath this because it feels like, well, we've got capacity, we're trying to keep these institutions afloat and so the ages are moving back, which, which strikes me somewhat odd. So I, I've got another kind of question, but I was just curious about that one in particular.
I'll, I'll speak to it from, from the data that we came across in our local research. First is the, all of the overwhelming comments in the survey. So if you, if you go into that section and, and you look at what people are looking for and as well as the comments, you'll see over and over again, folks asking for, for that and asking for infant care. The second was really reinforced for me when we held the focus groups with families. Because we had that question as well, and I think, you know, Kira actually had that question as well. Would, would families in the Bellhaven community want to send their children if they were younger? And we asked the families directly, because at this point, they can't start with their children until they're three. So we just asked about two and they overwhelmingly said yes, they would want, yes, I would have enrolled my child earlier if I could. And the, the final data point I would, I would put on there is the enrollment history at Menlo Children's Center. Because as I mentioned, traditionally, that program is full, the one that serves the 18-month-olds, 18 to 24. And the spaces are only empty when families are, are turning over and moving up in the program.
Got it. And then my, my following question was similar to the mayor's, but from a different angle was, are you, I'm not as curious about other cities successfully doing this or not, I think it's a really great point, but are other cities seeing this as their role? I'm just, you know, I understand there's demand there, I understand people would like certain things, but I think the comment about something started in municipal and then moved to the school. So I'm, I'm just curious how cities are seeing their role, because, you know, it, it's, it's new to me and I, it's not how I was raised. I don't think my, my family would have ever, ever considered it to be the city's role to provide these services. So I'm just, I'm curious what you're seeing.
That's a great question. And we did look into that for that very reason, to say, are we the outlier here? Or, or is this part of what happens in other places? So what we found was there are a lot of, many, many cities do have care that falls more under park and rec class that is not a licensed preschool. So that would be the most common format that they use, but they are not, it might be a half-day, very small, you know, half-day program and they use that same space for something else in the afternoon or, or something like that. There are several programs, they're listed in the report as well. I believe it's in the appendix, I can look up exactly the, the area, but it talks about there are nearby schools. So Pacifica does have this. And there are several others, I believe South San Francisco, there are, those are the main ones that are in this county that we looked at, right, locally? So it's not a significant number, I would say, and yet it's not unheard of. It certainly is happening with other, other cities are definitely in this because they have the space for it and it is, it is a significant value to the community that, but most cities do have some form of, you know, a class, even if it's a half-day or whatever, there, most cities that we came across do have some form of that. And if they don't, they partner with another next-door city for that.
Thank you. Yeah, that's what I remember, yeah, is private class, less formal structured education indicates based in more what you just described.
Yes.
I was trying to get a sense of how things have evolved or.
Yes. And I would say, just like you mentioned, though, there's also a more significant need now for people that are looking for infant care and toddler care. And there has been that shift in our community where people need that to be able to do their jobs, where there used to be, that's maybe a more traditional, those drop families that do not have two working parents. And that, that is generally who's able to, who does those programs. And that, when I spoke with those groups, they said that is their, their target audience or usually that's who comes.
Thanks.
When you were saying that's who comes, you were talking about two working parents or where there was, could you explain?
Yes, sure. Let me clarify. Thank you. The people who they, the families who tend to use and go to those programs, they said tend to have one, one parent who's at home. So they tend to not be two-income families because their programs are from nine to noon and that doesn't leave enough time for a job or, you know, actually getting a lot of work done in between. So that's, that's primarily who they have coming to their program. So they don't really serve the same community that we serve that are full-time working families in the community who are trying to juggle all of the responsibilities of their young family.
Thank you. And I guess I should have said one or two working parents.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash. You mentioned a few times about, in your report, about possibility of providing services for staff. Were the staff surveyed as well for both the Bellhaven Child Development Center and MCC?
Staff had the opportunity to fill out the survey, but we didn't ask them to identify themselves as staff, but we held focus groups with the staff at each center.
And was there any data captured on how many staff would need childcare or under, say, under 10 years old?
No, there wasn't.
My next question is if the Bellhaven Child Development Center or MCC or both ended up providing childcare for younger than what they do now, what would be the time that would be needed to train the staff if they are not trained now?
I'll jump in on that. Pardon me. And then Ms. Jones may also jump in. That would be a bit of a longer-term strategy, probably more on the order of 18 months to 24 months, given the level of educational requirements and some additional licensing. But I see Ms. Jones is nodding her head, she can add some more detail if needed, but that's kind of the overview.
So almost two years to train staff to be qualified to work with children at infant toddler age?
It looks like Natalia is coming forward to give more detail there.
Yeah, because if we went to lower, younger age groups, there will be additional classes that they would need to take. Currently, because we're doing preschool age, if we went down to the toddler age, there's several units that they would need to take, which are college courses that, depending on where the, the teachers are in their education, you're looking at anywhere from six to 12 units, so six to 12 months that they would need to take. So about a year.
Thank you. And if we were to do that, do you see that as something that would be optional for staff? Mandatory? Like, how would that work?
If it was something that they were interested, I think they would, they would do it if they had children that they were interested in it in our programs.
Thank you.
One more question on that. And is it something which staff would see as a desirable change? Something which actually might help us attract more staff or, and retain staff to have this option to not only get more education to do this, but also perhaps have, be looking for staff who have that certification or education?
I do think it will be.
Thank you.
And, and there was definitely openness to this when, from staff at both of the centers.
Thank you. I'm intrigued by your comment that Palo Alto City had, their childcare went from a city sponsored to nonprofit. Could you explain a little bit more about that and why that decision was made and how successful it's been?
Thank you. Sure, I'd be happy to answer. I spoke with someone there and actually they are, they have been in Menlo Park, I believe, or sorry, excuse me, Palo Alto, they've been independent from the, they did not say why, but it's been quite some time. It's been 20, at least 20 years or longer that they have been independent from the school district. They, all of the, the sites that they use are, are city-owned buildings and district-owned buildings. So they really run from infant all the way through up until, and up until through the preschool years and they really are connected to the schools and they're even, you know, they're in nearby school sites. So one of the things that we, I'm not sure if we've said exactly this tonight, but that it's this continuity of care that's really important for parents. That is part of the reason we suggested also this younger age. Because as you can imagine, the, you know, one year in a, in a location is disruptive to a child and that's not what anyone wants. And so those, the Palo Alto programs do provide that. I don't have insight, but I think that they would be more than happy to talk, to discuss more about that process, but it has been quite some time. And the city took on, you know, like I said, they have a fundraising part of what they do to provide that for the community and with parents and all of that as well. So, does that answer your question?
And this was the childcare 20 years ago, so was that related to the city or the school district? Or I know in Palo Alto, it's maybe one of the same.
I believe it was the city. It started with the city. And then, like I said, quite some time ago, they've been, it might be, the program has maybe been around for close to 40 or 50 years as a total. But they have, it's on their website, I apologize, I don't remember the exact number. But, but they then moved on and decided that it would be better run by a separate nonprofit and easier as we, as you understand why it's challenging to run, run that sort of a program. But they also had a, had an answer for how to shift it with a, a different funding model.
And do you have any data on the affordability? If that's something, are they moving toward what, how does it compare to what we're looking at here?
What we're looking at here? You know, that's a really great question. I think we'd have to look more into a direct comparison. It's similar from the standpoint of they do offer full-time care. And so that would be a really interesting connection to make there. But like I said, they also have this nonprofit piece where they fundraise. So that can provide subsidized spaces for lower income, middle income, those sorts, those families who need that. I would need to look more further and obviously discuss more with them about their exact funding model, because that's not public information per se.
Thank you. And then has, it seems like a possible, well, we are getting so many new residents here with all of our new housing and the multifamily housing that is throughout the city. It seems like that is a possible source of new kids. And has that been approached, have we approached the, the multifamily leasing folks to advertise that our, the city services? And is that a possible way to get more people even despite whatever direction we decide to move just right now? Because I certainly know that there's a huge need out there, is what I hear.
We, we haven't approached the, that community directly, but it's one of the reasons that we highlighted the communication plan and really for the reason you just named, which is that there has been a significant shift of people moving in and out of the community. Furthermore, when we, when we did our research, we spent a lot of time on the web, looking at websites and really realized that there's a pretty big gap around the information that's available on the city's webpage that has some limited information around the program and the hours, but doesn't, for example, show you what the schedule looks like, doesn't reference the preschool foundations curriculum that Kira spoke to. And it doesn't show, you know, pictures of the facility, pictures of the staff. If you look at the websites of other preschools in the community, you'll see that families get a lot more information. And new families moving into the community get their information off the web, really not through word of mouth as, as we used to. So it's, it's, it was a strategy that grew in its importance the more and more we dug into the research and for the reasons that you've highlighted as well.
Thank you. Oh, Mayor Combs.
Thanks, Vice Mayor Nash. I just, like, this, this may end up being a question, it may not exactly, just as, as I'm sort of understanding, you know, what's before the council. As I see it, there, there are two issues, at least to the childcare services we provide. One is under enrollment. And this exists across the offerings in Bellhaven and, and at Burgess, that they're, both programs are, are under enrolled. And, and the other issue is, is what seems to be a growing city subsidy of the program. And that is something that is, which to date is, represents over, over a million dollars a year. But that exists only at, at MCC, right? We, we don't have a, a subsidy issue at, at Bellhaven because of the way that, that's funded. And so then when you look at, then the only issue that exists at Bellhaven, which is under enrollment, then I think a lot of, you know, your strategies could make sense. You know, going, going younger, you know, increasing, you know, marketing, because you do have some flexibility there, given that, again, like I say, we're, we're not talking about a, a large subsidy. My concern, though, is that we, if you, you switch to MCC, it's, it's not clear that any of these strategies really address, are likely to address that subsidy, that, that, that very large subsidy issue. And if anything, they come with, with some really clear risk that may result in the subsidy actually increasing as you try to get the mix right of, 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 as you have to go and do, do training to offer, offer the services for, for younger kids. As you look to incentivize new populations by lowering your cost, right? And so, so these things are, are, are likely to possibly solve your under enrollment to some degree at MCC, but then to possibly then, at the same time, exacerbate your, your, your subsidy issue. And so for me, I, I think that, that that's, you know, I think it's important to look at it. And if, if I've gotten this wrong, then someone please chime in and correct me. But there, there, you know, MCC, we're facing two problems or two issues, two challenges. And at Bellhaven, we're, we're really only facing one challenge and, and there was some flexibility or leeway in, in how we might want, want to deal with that because you don't have the other challenge.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I think you've succinctly stated the kind of main distinctions between the two facilities and how these strategies, you know, might impact either way.
City Clerk Karen, could you please bring up the slide that have the points that council is supposed to consider? City Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you. I have a question. And this goes along the lines of what Mayor Combs just brought up. And I'll just say this now and I'll likely say it again. I believe it is very important to invest in our children. So I don't see, I look at this a little bit differently. Has it, has there been a discussion or somewhere in the, the recommendations for the city to include this whole going back to work movement? There are companies that are, they're taking up to six months, companies that have 25, 30,000 employees. I'm not sure if that's being conveyed in the report. And then also. Um, and then also, um, I don't know if you looked at in your survey, as far as who is working from home, there are folks who work from home that still utilize childcare. So I see it as a need. And so I'm looking at ways to actually implement at least three to four of the recommendations from staff to see if we can continue to provide a valuable service to our children in Menlo Park.
Councilmember Schmidt.
I, I also wanted to build on both the last couple of comments. I, I'm just curious, uh, I, I definitely agree about the investment in our children. But the, the more this sort of gets parsed into the two different centers and then how we're going to fund it, um, I'm a little concerned about, I, I would go even beyond the exacerbating the subsidy issue where we would build the ability to do these things, increase costs, decrease revenue. And that creates a new, uh, structure, a new financial structure there. My worry is a little bit more about the way we pay for that, given the very big uncertainty around grant dependency. And I noticed some of the comments in here around affordability. You know, this comment about it would depend on successfully securing major grant funding. So I, I, I think I have a question in there somewhere, but my concern is we build this capacity, we make these recommendations, we potentially, um, I don't know, double the costs or decrease the revenue. So the, and, and then we, we count on grants to kind of come through and save the day. And everything I see is grants are probably not going to do that for any city across many different programs. So I, I'm curious about how much of these changes would be dependent on securing grants from the state? And how would you rate that as a high, a medium, a low? Because that feels like very shaky ground to be making recommendations and increasing our, our cost or decreasing our revenue. So hopefully you can make sense of what I just said, but I'm, I'm worried about counting on grants as the ultimate thing there and would just love to hear your perspective.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll, I'll try to field that one. A great question. The reference to needing to secure significant grants, I believe was in reference to the Menlo Children's Center becoming one of the subsidized programs like, like BHCDC, um, to some of the earlier comments about, um, the level of subsidy that the city provides. The Bellhaven Child Development Center does receive major grant funding from the state of California, has for quite some time. That pretty much offsets all of its costs. It is under enrolled compared to its capacity. However, the, the state does reimburse the costs even for that lower enrollment. One of the potential solutions, because there was this desire for more affordable care that we heard in the survey, was okay, well, you know, subsidized, like income-based subsidized care could get at that if there's a demand. To convert MCC though, would entail quite a bit of processing, would be dependent on securing a, a grant such as the ones that we're receiving from California Department of Education. Just also want to, um, excuse me, sorry about that. Bring back that, um, the nonprofit model that the Palo Alto PAC had used, that facilitates their ability to do some additional fundraising. That's not necessarily grants, it could be. But, um, I think all of this does point to, uh, you know, where does the revenue come from to close any gaps that there might be?
Yeah, and thank, and just to build on that, I, I'm, I'm just worried about the, the coming hyper-competitive nature of trying to win statewide grants, because as federal money is as wobbly as it seems to be, competition for state-level grants, I would imagine is going to increase by a factor of, what, ten, twenty? So I, I, I'm just, I guess I'm personally nervous about having a cost model that in some ways depends on grants when the environment for winning that is, is going to get much harder, it feels like, over the next four years. So that's, that's the reason for asking the question. It's not, it's not the heart, it's more the head that's worried about paying for it all, so.
No, that, that's really critical. And I share your concerns around, around what will happen to state and federal funding in, in the future. I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of two local, um, resources. One is Measure K, which has been passed by San Mateo County. And one of the targeted areas for Measure K is around supporting early care. It wouldn't provide, I don't believe it would provide ongoing funding, but it could provide funding that would help with the transition. The second thing is, was more recently passed. There was a parcel tax that was passed in Ravenswood, specific to the Ravenswood School District. So that could potentially support work at Bellhaven. It was just passed in November, I believe. And so work is underway right now to determine how that funding will be allocated. And it's something that we would recommend that the city council look into as well.
And thank you for bringing up the parcel tax. And I didn't, another school district have a parcel tax as well? Menlo Park City School.
Menlo as well? Great. Yeah, I think that reflects that there is a, um, a growing recognition of the need to support families with early care. And there really is a movement happening, not just here in Menlo Park, but across the county, across the state, of folks trying to figure out this problem of how to make, have both high-quality care that is affordable for families.
The Menlo Park, um, City School District, I don't, I think that was, um, for more for infrastructure. I don't know if it could be used for, um, this sort of purpose.
Got it.
So something that Councilmember Taylor, um, said about return to work triggered this idea. I believe we have a new company with thousands and thousands of workers coming to the Bayfront area. And I wonder if that is not a great source for new, um, kids as well? And maybe to, um, do that proactively, to work with them.
It, it does seem from the data that we saw and, um, the comments here tonight that the, the communication strategy is clearly of great interest to pursue that and to do that. You know, it, reaching out to, for example, developers, employers, that type, just to, in, in addition to the upgrades to the website and other things like that. Those do seem to be like low-hanging fruit, short-term, that, um, you know, we could implement fairly, fairly quickly without a lot of expense to, um, make sure that those audiences are aware of what's available and potentially, um, gain some new, um, enrollees.
Could you walk us through your direction, the direction that you're seeking, please? Which ones were the easy and all the way through, please?
Yes, thank you. So again, they are, um, they're listed here on the screen. There are more or less in order from top to bottom, from things that could be implemented in the short term to things that, with short-term being like within six months. To, that would be like the first two items, um, the flexible scheduling at MCC, um, consumer awareness. The next several, from C to G, those would be like midterm as far as timeframe. This would be somewhere in the six to eighteen-month range. For example, creating a sliding scale for tuition assistance for middle-income families, instituting discounts for employees, creating a cooperative childcare option, that would be only at MCC, expanding to provide care to two-year-olds at BHCDC, increasing slots for eighteen-month-old, eighteen-month-olds at MCC. Again, those are kind of the midterm ones. And then adding infant care is a little bit of a longer-term strategy. The, so far, the commentary, the feedback, the questions from city council actually has been quite helpful for us to frame kind of like the next iteration that we might come back with for some decision-making in the context of the operating budget deliberations coming up. It does sound like, um, pursuing the marketing options is of interest. Staff would recommend that, that does seem very doable. Related to the flexible scheduling options, again, that's something that we probably could implement fairly quickly. So unless there's objection to that, there's not necessarily a significant cost impact there under current conditions at MCC. Some other aspects, though, I think we heard some concern about, um, moves that would increase costs while also decreasing revenue. So for example, creating a sliding scale that offers tuition discounts to middle-income families that, um, seems likely to reduce revenue, um, even if it does increase enrollment. We could look at it a little further, but I think what we're hearing is that doesn't seem to be, uh, a key strategy to spend a lot of time on at this point in time, based on what we've heard from the totality of council tonight. Similarly, instituting discounts for city employees. It does seem like there might be a few who are interested and eligible for it. Probably wouldn't increase enrollment significantly, but it would be a good benefit. Might not have as big of an impact. Wasn't sure where we landed on that. Would be good to maybe hear a little bit more clarity on whether we should look into that a little bit further. Creating a cooperative childcare option, again, this would be just at MCC. It's really kind of unknown what that would entail to have a mix of city staff who are licensed to provide the care, to have parents providing some support. And again, that would, I think, be with the idea that they would then pay lower tuition fees. So probably would involve some increase in workload for the staff and at least indirectly, some increase in cost. And it could potentially, the idea there would be that the revenue would, would go down, at least on a per-family basis, because they would be paying lower fees in exchange for contributing their time. So didn't hear from the city council, a lot of strong interest in that. But again, you know, feel free to correct my understanding. Expanding to provide care to two-year-olds at BHCDC and increasing the number of slots for eighteen-month-olds at MCC. The data really kind of clearly indicates that infant and younger toddler care is a need. It's not, um, an area that Universal TK has moved into yet and really sees the market as it has the four-year-olds. We anticipate they'll probably expand to three-year-olds. It's a very tough deal to beat, um, free childcare that then matriculates into the public school system. I think we just see the writing on the wall there, that, that's going to be a really tough place for us to compete. So the younger ages does seem like something worth exploring further. There's a lot of financial intricacies around that because the ratio from teacher to child becomes much lower, more staffing, maybe some facilities need to be, uh, changed up. Staff believes it's still worth looking at a little more closely to get some more information for the city council. And I, I see, you know, some heads nodding there. So I think we'll kind of take that as a direction that we should maybe tease that out a little bit further. Adding infant care is really kind of taking those same considerations where the cost likely will increase, maybe dramatically. Um, and again, you're going to have fewer seats overall within the, um, capacity of the facility. So it may be that that's a bit of a longer-term look, maybe something for a future discussion and maybe try some of these, um, more, um, shorter-term, little, less heavy of a lift strategies first and kind of see where we're at. That's sort of, if that's helpful, that was sort of my recap as I understood the conversation so far. Welcome any additional thoughts or clarification from the council.
Thank you, that was very helpful. Mayor Combs.
Yeah, thanks, um, Vice Mayor Nash. I, I just want to, um, make it clear where I stand. I mean, one, I, I don't, I don't think that this is, um, an issue of, of marketing or, or to be clear, awareness. Childcare services aren't an impulse purchase. If you're a parent and you need childcare services, you are very motivated to understand all of the options, um, that are available to you. So, uh, I, I think what we are seeing is that, that, um, not a lack of awareness, but, um, a lack of, of demand. The demand and the marketplace has truly changed. And it has changed based on a number of factors. One, because where, you know, work-from-home world during the pandemic, a lot of, um, families moved to parts of the state and the country where, um, where, uh, living costs were, were more affordable. And, and then at the other end of that, you've, you've seen an expansion of the offerings of the public school system, um, into TK. And, and as Mr. Reinhardt pointed, looking into, to, to younger ages. So this is a very dynamic market. And what we're seeing is that, um, the city just does not have the agility to, to compete in change, um, to reflect that, that market. I mean, how long have we been talking about this? And so like after a year or so of, and, and two council meetings, we're going to now look to possibly, you know, a marketing strategy. This proves the point, the city just does not have agility to compete in this market. And, and even now, like, Mr. Reinhardt will get some direction. He'll come back in, in, in a few months and maybe get a little bit more direction from people who have no direct awareness or understanding of the childcare market, because we don't. And who say, well, we hear of demand, well, like, again, if there was demand, the capacity would be met. There is no demand. Are, are the capacity exceeds the demand? And, and the fact that we have spots available proves out that point. And so, and, and this idea that people just aren't aware, again, like I said, these aren't impulse purchases. If a parent needs childcare, they, they know all of, all of, all of their options. And so what I, so I don't really have like any direction to give as far as these points, because I, I think it's, 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 um, it, it is, it is really sort of not engaging in the substance of what, what the issue is before us. At the, you know, at the end of the day, again, what we're dealing with is a, is a, is a very dynamic market. And, and, and the city doesn't have the ability to, to, to compete in it. And so what we should be comfortable with is the idea of the city subsidy of this program continuing to grow. So now it's at a million, two, or somewhere in there. And I think the, the valid question for us is, is there a number where we are comfortable or where we become uncomfortable? Is it two million, is it three million? But that's the direction it's going in. Because there's nothing that we're doing here where I get the sense that this is going, this is going to change. The, the market is changing and, and we don't have the ability to change in a timely fashion. And the change that would be substantive is, comes with its own risk and no guarantees that, 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 that it's going to solve. It, it's really going to solve the issue of, of addressing the capacity or addressing, um, the, the, the current subsidy. And, and so, you, you know, for me, again, I, I, I don't have direction to give because I don't think any of this direction substantively will, will address the issue. And as a, as a city council, we should just become comfortable with the idea that, you, you know, you know, subsidizing this program, uh, into the seven figures, into the foreseeable future every year is, is what we see as an investment. And that's fine, we can make that decision. But that, that's the decision we're making. And I don't think we're being honest when we think and say that like, what's, 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 what's the issue here? Is, is, is an issue of marketing.
Councilmember Taylor. Thank you. There was one other, one other item I just wanted to add. And this had to do with, um, some of the feedback from families on page eighty-three just about providing, um, healthy lunch and snacks. So if there's an opportunity to have increased access to high-quality education and high-quality nutrition. Thank you.
Councilmember Schmidt.
I, I'm happy to wait till after you.
Yeah, I, I will, um, thank you. I, I wanted to, um, maybe also summarize some things and, and build on what Mayor Combs had said, because I, I think some of my questions were, he, he did a great job of sort of summarizing where, where I was struggling a little bit, as well as, is, we're in kind of a business mindset where we have these, these, um, organizations where, you know, maybe we should be looking at this as a, a service provided to some of our most vulnerable families in need. And that's a different mindset and a different way of looking at it. And I'm, I'm, and, and a couple of things, you know, we, we would maybe, I think, um, to Vice Mayor Nash's idea, you know, maybe this is a, a benefit we offer to recruit new city employees here too, because I know we hear we have staffing challenges. But, but trying to treat this like a business model where we're in competition, that's what's been, uh, struggling to kind of land with me. So, um, I, I would say please take that as, as just feedback. I think the other big piece of feedback, as I was reading through this, you know, some of these larger investments, I'd put it through that filter, but, but I'd you know, some of these larger investments, I'd put it through that filter, but, but I'd also ask us to maybe ease into new cost burdens until we settle that first question about what is this really? But also until the environment settles. I, I tend to be a little fiscally conservative until there's certainty that the city's on solid footing and the overall economy is on solid footing. So I'd say things in here that could be smaller, more cost neutral feel okay to me. But, but big structural transitional investments when the wider economy is just not settled, or we, we're going to count on potentially grants to come save the day. And I know you're not saying that, but people are, people are doing that. So that's, those are my guiding principles really is, is think about it not as a business environment or a market, but more as, should we do this as a city for key populations? The only other thing I'd say is if it's also for local educators, I don't know why it came up. But would, would the school, would schools one part of this as well? If it helps them recruit teachers and retain teachers, could we have a model where this is, you know, the schools chip in and we chip in and it's a, it's a benefit really? So thank, and thank you, by the way. This, this has been really educational. I just wanted to say, I appreciate all the work that went into this as well.
So I have to, I guess I have been swayed somewhat by what has been, by this latest conversation. Because I don't understand why with the need that I believe is out there and that we do have this, the enrollment issues. However, I think we still should try some of these options. I would, as I think Mr. Reinhardt said, I would definitely be for B. I still think that we can market. I think that there, with the new multifamily housing, with the new business that's coming here, we should try to do, to work with them and see if there's more that we can offer there. Assuming that creating more flexible scheduling options at MCC is not a huge lift, it's up at A. I would think that that's worthwhile. I agree that we do not want to take a greater burden on right now. So I think the C, as you stated, C and E are not things that I would pursue. I think that it is something. If it can help us attract city employees and also schools, perhaps local educators, I think that is a huge benefit. And I like the idea of talking to the schools and seeing if they would participate in this and provide, perhaps be able to provide some sort of financial assistance or some sort of assistance. I would like to see expanding the childcare to two-year-olds at BH CDC. I think that it is a need and that program is not creating a huge financial hardship for the city. And I think it's very, very worthwhile. I guess I, what I've changed on is increasing slots for the 18-month-olds at MCC. Just, I would like to know how much of a lift that is. Because that's where, yes, if it's going to create a greater financial burden for the city, perhaps that's one thing that we don't do yet. And we see how everything else plays out. And then I would wait on the adding infant care because of the issues that you've reminded, that you've stated. Thank you. Great. Councilmember White.
So I mostly agree with you, Council or Vice Mayor Nash. Unfortunately, the only thing I am, I would like to see is definitely the expansion to provide care to two-year-olds at the Bellhaven Center. But I also just think to your earlier point with the, you heard from the community that there is a demand for the younger children and knowing that the state is absolutely coming in for three-year-olds and four-year-olds. I just think it makes all the sense in the world to move to the younger care groups, especially if we're just trying to think long-term. So I would love to see that. And I think that that would really help with the demand, because I, I do agree with you that I, I think the demand is out there. I certainly hear about it often. So I, that's what I would like to see prioritized. And of course, the marketing, yes, especially if it's a lower lift, I absolutely would like to see that, especially the website. It sounds like that could be a low lift that could end up being a higher impact. And then, yes, I think if we're for the sliding scale and the discounts, perhaps we could almost pilot it with the city staff and school staff to see how it works. And then if it's working well, we could expand. But that's sort of where my thoughts are.
If I may, I just wanted to make a clarifying comment around the lift needed to increase slots for 18-month-olds at MCC. It's really more a question of time than money. The, the current license is only for 12 students. So it would require getting another license from the state. That's a facility license. However, it doesn't require, for example, remodeling anything. So that, it's really about time. It, it doesn't actually require a new job classification because there are already people who serve 18-month-olds. There may need to be people who are retrained or hired if we increase that program. But I, I think we might have misrepresented just a little bit how much of a lift that was. And I, I don't want that to get lost because it is actually the, the program that right now has the highest enrollment. The 18-month-olds.
And tonight, we're actually, we're not making decisions. So it sounds like it would be good to get more information.
To get, to get more information on it.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. And then Councilmember Schmidt actually came up with the name of the company. Snowflake is the new company that is coming in with thousands of employees. So. Any more information that you need?
Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you. My question is, who will be enhancing the marketing?
Oh, the city has a fairly robust marketing activity already underway in many, many different areas. So I think the, the initial intent would be for the city staff to really focus on overhauling the website, increasing some of that outreach and marketing to some of the places that have been mentioned today and run that as part of the city's overall marketing.
And will that happen before we see the next, see this item come back on an agenda?
Yeah, that would be the goal. The, the website change could be done certainly before we come back with the budget. Some of the outreach also could happen. Whether or not we see actual results in enrollment that quickly, I'm not so sure. It might take a little longer for the, those effects to be visible. But certainly to make those changes is possible by the time we come back with the budget.
Okay, thank you. And also, if you could make it so it's more visible on this, maybe from the front page or something. It's a lot of, we've got a great website and a lot of the pieces are very hard to find. Thank you. Councilmember Schmidt.
Just a tiny thing to build, build on what Sean just said as well. Is it, it'd also be interesting to test that theory if this would be a, a good incentive for recruiting new employees and, and local educators as well. Like, that feels like a powerful idea. So the, the sooner we could maybe test that theory, that would be, that'd be awesome. Thanks.
Just really quickly, I'm, I'm trying to understand, what do we mean by exactly testing that, that theory? Because that would, that would mean likely a need to increase the subsidy, right? Because the idea is that it would be, we would be providing childcare to city employees at a, at a lower price point than we currently provide it or at a no price point, correct?
Yeah, apologies. All I meant was maybe surveying or talking to those groups, not, not actually implementing the change. I think to your point, Mayor Combs, not, not implementing it and then seeing how it goes. But maybe just floating that idea with a group of city employees to ask the question or some local educators to ask the question. A little more research, not, not pulling the trigger on the, the actual item.
And, and I think a key part of, thanks for that clarification, that additional research would be understanding the additional sort of costs and subsidy that, that happens with that, like, right? And so like if, with, with each of those, those decisions. Because again, if we're looking at MCC, at the current moment, we're, we're subsidizing every family that's involved, every family that uses that service to the tune of thousands of dollars a year. Someone can check my math. And, and so, so there's already a subsidy for every family that utilizes MCC. In, in theory, we would be increasing that subsidy for, you know, the, the families of, of city or school district employees that, that would use it. And so it would be great to get like, if we're doing this research, a, a, so we all have complete visibility of like a annual per-family, you know, subsidy cost.
Councilmember Taylor.
We need a minute. Any other comments while we're, or any clarifications that would be helpful?
So far, all this feedback has been very helpful. No questions at this point.
I guess one clarification, city staff means all city staff. It's not just city staff working in the facilities.
Oh, yes, that's, that's how we took, took that.
Good. Thank you. All right. So we will, are you sure? Okay. If we are.
Vice Mayor, I guess there's just one other thing that generated some questions this evening, and it's not on the slide. But I just want to use this opportunity to check in with the city council. There are some questions about the Palo Alto example and whether there's any desire for additional research on that, that sort of model and transition or not. I think that would be helpful to hear.
I would be interested is, I'm seeing a no from, no? Mayor Combs, how do you feel?
Well, I, I think at some point there may come a need for the city explorer if it, if it, if it wants to outsource childcare, right? And, and so that would mean that, as exists in a lot of cities, that it provides the facilities. But that the, the childcare services are being run, as with the Palo Alto example, by a separate entity. I, I don't know if that comes through an actual transition of the current program to a nonprofit. Or you just put out for bid for a sort of RFP at some point in the future. If, if the city decides that it, it wants to get out of the childcare business. And so for me, that would be the approach in the future. If the city decided that this was not the, the, the business it wanted to be in, what would be an RFP not necessarily looking to transition the current program in, into, into a nonprofit.
Did that?
Unfortunately, for the benefit of the public, it might be helpful just to confirm. I, I can recap that I'm not hearing from three council members in interest in pursuing that. So I think that that would be.
I think that is correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we will now move on to regular business. Under regular business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. The regular business item tonight is receive and file the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024. Here to introduce the item soon is Administrative Services Director Brittany Mello.
Hello. Good evening, City Council. I am pleased to present you with the fiscal year 2324 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, or ACFOR. I want to take a moment to thank our finance team for their hard work preparing the ACFOR, which includes Ying Chen, our senior accountant, Ruru Tang, another accountant. And we have with us our interim finance and budget manager, Ronnie Singh, and our management analyst two, Adrian Patino. And then we have Assistant Director Jared Hanson, who is joining us virtually this evening. I also want to thank all of the staff in other departments who helped contribute data and statistical information to help put together the ACFOR. And finally, I want to thank the Finance and Audit Commission for their work reviewing the ACFOR. So for tonight's presentation, we'll provide a high-level overview of the ACFOR, along with some helpful background information on fund accounting, types of funds, revenue and expenditure categories, and an overall look at the city's finances. So what is an ACFOR? The Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, or ACFOR, provides a complete overview of the city's financial operations and financial positions. And the, the content and the format of the ACFOR follow required principles and standards of accounting and financial reporting that are adopted by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or GASB, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles or GAAP. So it's very prescribed format and content. And it's nearly 300 pages. So it's, it's not light reading, but it has a lot of great information in there. So city staff prepare the financial statements each fiscal year. And then we have an independent accounting firm that audits those statements. So as a reminder, the fiscal year runs from July 1st through June 30th. And our city's current auditor is the Poon Group. So what is the difference between a budget and an audit? So the annual budget is a spending plan that helps outline the anticipated revenues and expenses for the upcoming fiscal year. Whereas the annual audit is a review of the actual results of the prior fiscal year's financial activities. So I think it's good to keep those differences in mind. So here we have the ACFOR overview. So the ACFOR is presented in three main sections. We have the introductory section, which includes the transmittal letter with a narrative overview, description of economic conditions and outlook. And it includes the city's organizational structure and list of public officials. Then we have the financial section, which contains the independent auditor's report, the management discussion and analysis, which helps provide an overview and analysis of the financial statements that follow. Then we have the basic financial statements and the notes to the basic financial statements. And the notes provide really helpful background information and context that help the reader understand the financial statements, such as policy details where applicable, definitions, information on the city's membership and regional groups, just a wealth of information in that note section. And there's also the required supplementary information and supplementary information. And last, the third section is the statistical section. And this presents a variety of financial and demographic data, really looking at trends over the last 10 fiscal years. So it helps to see how is the city overdoing or doing over time? How is it changing? I wanted to take a moment to recognize that the city did receive the GFOA, or the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for our prior audit. So this really helps show that the city complied with all the required standards and accounting principles and that the city is committed to a spirit of transparency and full disclosure to help users. to help users easily read the ACFOR and access the city's financial information. So in the independent auditor's report, the Poon Group rendered an unmodified or clean opinion that the financial statements were presented fairly, um, in all material respects. And so unmodified clean opinion is the ideal result of the audit. It's the most desirable opinion. So here are the different types of basic financial statements that are included in the ACFOR. These are described in more detail in the Management's Discussion and Analysis section that ha- helps add more context to these statements. So the government-wide financial statements provide a longer-term view of the city's activities and financial health. And then we have the fund financial statements, which report on the city's operations in more detail with a shorter-term view. The statements provi- present the city's funds in those three categories that you see before you, governmental, proprietary, and fiduciary, and then notes. So just some basics of fund accounting to help orient, um, those reading the ACFOR. So governments employ fund accounting, and all funds are then combined to create the city's total budget. Funds are separate pots of money that are set up to help track resources that are, need to be used for specific purposes. The source of money determines how it can be spent, whether it's restricted or unrestricted, and each fund is maintained individually with separate accounting. So that takes up a, really a bulk of the ACFOR, is all of the different fund details. The city does have over 60 separate funds. And so here is a table of the major type of funds. Uh, we do include the general fund, which is the city's primary operating fund. It's our largest fund. It's where we have the city council's reserve policy applied, um, and it does represent unrestricted revenue sources. Next, we have the special revenue funds, which are restricted to a specific purpose. We have 46 special revenue funds. An example of this would be transportation impact fees. Next, we have capital project funds, which are restricted to acquire, construct, improve capital facilities. We have our enterprise funds, which have revenues from charges to users for services provided, similar to a private business, so this includes our water and solid waste. Then we have our internal services funds, which help track our goods and services provided to other departments, um, on a cost reimbursement basis, and allocates, uh, shared items overhead, um, et cetera. We have our debt service funds, which revenues are collected to pay for debt payments. And finally, we have a fiduciary fund, uh, where the city acts as fiduciary on behalf of others. Uh, we only have one of these, which is for the successor agency to the Menlo Park Dev- Community Development Agency. So really high-level overview of our major revenue and expenditure categories. In revenues, we rely on taxes, um, some taxes that we rely on, our property tax, sales tax, transient occupancy tax. Taxes might be, um, a general tax or special tax, which have different, uh, rules for passing. We have our user fees and rates, um, and we have grants, as we talked a little bit about this evening. And expenditures, most of our expenditures fall within our personnel. We are a se- a service organization, and it takes people to provide services. Um, and then our operating expenses, um, which are everything from materials and supplies to professional services, like with the audit, for example, um, as well as utilities and those con- contributions to insert internal service funds, which I mentioned. Then we have our capital outlay, uh, equipment purchases, construction costs, and then factoring in depreciation and amortization, our debt service, and transfers to other funds. So the next few slides highlight some key financial data that's found in the ACFOR. So first, we have the net position, which is an overall indicator of the city's financial health across all funds. This is as high-level as it gets. So really, you look at this over time to see whether the city's net position is increasing um, or decreasing, and that's the indicator of whether the city's financial position is improving or worsening. Um, it really reflects the total revenues versus expenditures for the city, including things like non-liquid assets, such as the value of the building that we're sitting in right now, and unrealized investment gains. So it's, uh, not meant to, uh, present, um, all cash being available for use or anything like that, but it does help capture the totality of the, the city's finance at a single point in time. So for, as of June 30th, 2024, the city's net position increased by 34.3 million to 597.3 million. And this number really ref- reflects a continued investment by the city council in the city's infrastructure, with, um, various capital improvements, such as with the Bell Haven Community Campus, and it captures the value of the city's investments, which continue to grow and so on. Next, we go from as high as you can get to one specific fund, and that is because this is, um, arguably the most important fund for the city council. It has the most discretion in this fund. Um, so here, we ended the fiscal year with 76.5 million in revenues, 73.8 million in expenditures, and so that leaves us with 2.7 million increase to the fund balance. And that brings the general fund, fund balance, to 37.3 million. And so we can dive into that fund balance of the general fund a little bit more on this slide. And so we have the five different categories, um, shown here. The largest is the 28.3 million of the fund balance, which falls within the committed category, which follows the reserve policies established by the city council for emergency contingency, economic stabilization, and strategic pension funding. After setting aside the committed fund balance and accounting for the other restricted, non-spendable and assigned items, we have 7.1 million remaining in unassigned fund balance that are available to draw down as needed. And so how does one, uh, do a little bit of light reading with our 300-page, um, ACFOR? You visit menlopark.gov/ACFOR, and there you can see not only this year's, um, fifth, uh, ACFOR, but also the prior fiscal years, which can help with that historical analysis. And so that does present, um, conclude our high-level report. Um, online, we have, um, Mark Hu from the Poon Group. So our auditor is available if you have any questions, s- straight for the auditor. And then we have our Assistant Director Jared Hanson available as well.
Thank you. City Council, or City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on regular business item, H1, receive and file the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ending June 30th of 2024. If you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table, return to me at the clerk's desk. Participating on Zoom, please engage that hand feature. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. It looks like we currently have two raised hands on Zoom. So this will be the final call for public comment on regular business item H1. Okay, our first speaker will be Colette, followed by a Zoom user.
Hello.
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, great. Um, actually, I had a comment on the, on the, um, preschool care from earlier, so I'm not sure if I could still speak to that, but if not, um, I'm just wondering, what part of the budget, um, for this year will go to, um, affordable housing projects? And if that is listed on the, um, uh, in the budget on the website?
Yeah, you can, Colette, does that conclude your?
Yeah.
This time, perfect. Thank you. Thank you. All right, and then our next speaker is displayed as Zoom user. And if you could, just state your name. We have the one hand raised. The current listed name is Zoom user. You should have the opportunity to unmute your microphone at this time. Okay, this will be the final call for our Zoom user. If you'd like to provide your public comment for item H1 for the ACFOR. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and lower that hand. Uh, seeing no more hands or cards. Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you. Um, I would now like to open for city council questions and discussion. And I guess the first question would be, um, i- is there anything in the budget? As the caller requested about affordable housing that you can call out?
I think we're inviting up our terrific community development director, Deanna Chow, to help talk a little bit about, um, the funding that's been included in this year's fiscal year budget.
Great, thank you for the introduction, Deanna Chow, Community Development Director. And so, yes, um, excuse me. We do have our special revenue fund, as Brittany mentioned, the different sources of funding. And so, uh, the, our BMR fund, or Below Market Rate Housing Fund, is a special revenue fund, which is collected through our, um, commercial linkage fee. So, um, typically generated through commercial development, meeting a certain size or change of use, um, and contributes to our, to, um, our BMR fee. And so we do, um, use that commercial linkage fee to support programming in the housing space, um, to support some minister, uh, some s- housing staff. And then most recently, as of, um, we support our notice of funding availability. So we do support various, uh, housing development projects for production preservation, that, uh, the city council does review.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilmember Schmidt.
Thanks for, uh, I know that's a huge, uh, lift every, every year. Um, so thanks for preparing that. Um, Ms. Mello, it's a question for you, but if there's a, uh, different, um, set of folks that should be addressed to you. Uh, more in the, the report mentioned vigilance, so these questions are more in the spirit of kind of looking forward and trying to sense where the, the risk areas are. Um, one, I'd be curious where it feels like, um, on the top line, on the revenue side and on the bottom line expense side, where the biggest risks feel like they might be coming over the next one to three years. Second question is the, where it feels like there's risk areas for unintended subsidiza- um, subsidization. So I think Mayor Combs brought that up in the last e- comment, and, and it really struck a chord with me that, like, we could end up, um, unintentionally subsidizing things. So I'm curious where the risk areas might be there. And then the third is, the other one that I had mentioned before is the grant tightening at all levels, and where are exposure areas to that?
Um, and I can, I can s- start help answering those questions, and then I'll invite, um, our Assistant Director Jared Hanson on the screen as well. So, um, we did provide, um, some information on our grant, um, revenues, um, previously. I would say one.
Can you pull the mic a little bit closer?
Oh.
Thanks.
Um, is that better? Um, so for, for the grants, um, most of those end up going to, um, public works. That's our, our biggest, I would say, um, grant recipient, because that goes to a lot of capital improvements. Um, and there are a lot of dedicated revenue sources to help with those kind of things, like safe routes to school, for example. Um, we have, um, our largest multi-year grant is from FEMA for the Safer Bay Project, for sea level resilience. So those might be, um, examples of risks in the grant area. And we can certainly provide, uh, a, a larger overview on, on our grants, um, maybe as we're preparing for, for the budget. Um, in terms of our, um, overall revenue picture, oh, and I see, um, Assistant Director, uh, Hanson joined us, so I'll let him talk about the property tax and the vehicle license fee, which he did give a presentation to the council on last year. That remains, um, a topic where we're, we're focusing closely, um, for San Mateo County, as the primary county in the state that is, um, dealing with this, with this issue. And so maybe I'll turn it over to him for a moment.
Yeah, I think that the, uh, the, the biggest thing, um, with the VLF is this, the fact that there's no set funding source identified at the state to, uh, pay for our portion of the VLF that's in excess of, uh, the current funds that are available. And that's an ongoing thing with the county. That's expected to be continued into the foreseeable future. That affects us, um, I'm trying to grab my number here, but that affects us, um, quite a lot, actually, over the, the timeframe, um, for the next few fiscal years. Um, I think the biggest dollar amount that I remember seeing was that was going to be, and I apologize, I don't have that upright this particular second here. That is... Give me one second. Um, but outside of the VLF, the, the other areas or anything that's, it's going to be tied to, um, economic activity overall, that's going to be things that are going to be like your, uh, sales tax. Um, as consumer spending slows, then sales tax revenue goes down. Um, as inflation or the rates, uh, continue to go upward, then there is less spending. So anything that's tied to that economic activity or, or the change in the market will affect that. Um, the other would be, uh, like the TOT tax, the transient occupancy tax. That would be another one that would be tied to economic activity as, as more people are traveling. That revenue comes in higher as less people are traveling. Obviously, that changes that. So anytime there's any type of, um, uh, health scare, health scare, I guess you could say, like we had with, uh, COVID-19, um, that will definitely affect what our TOT, uh, revenues are, uh, just overall. See if I have.
And th- don't worry about the VLF, thanks. I, it wasn't a specific dollar amount question and more about, I remember that presentation from last year, so, um, okay. What's about the dollar amount, more about just the big buckets of where there's concern.
Yeah, those are the big buckets. I mean, our property taxes are definitely our biggest revenue source. Um, and we do have a good, healthy property tax, but the VLF is one of those that is going to, is, is going to cause us some challenges in that area. And then, um, the, the TOT and the sales tax being the next top two revenue sources for general fund, um, those are definitely the, the other two that we look at, uh, quite closely to make sure that we're, uh, projecting out wealth on, on, on those areas.
Great, and the, the last question was around, y- you know, if there's an insight into unintended subsidiza- subsidization of something where we expect, you know, we end up having to foot the bill unexpectedly. And, and if that's a complicated question that we should talk about in a different form, I'm, I'm okay with that, too.
Yes, my, part of that relates to, um, the city, um, is overdue for completing our cost of services study, which does help provide, um, the necessary justification for increasing, um, different fees to help recover that, those costs. Some require a very specific, um, detailed nexus to be able to, um, increase those fees, um, which perhaps our, our city attorney can talk about more if, if needed. So that, that does prevent us from recovering some of those, those costs at the moment.
Thanks.
If there are no other questions, is there a motion and a second on the table?
I can make a motion.
I'll second it. Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Schmidt and a second by City Councilmember Wise to receive and file the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024. Any further City Council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Taylor-
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash, City Councilmember Schmidt-
Yes.
City Councilmember Wise-
Yes.
Mayor Combs-
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the City Council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the City Council. Informational items are not action items. However, a City Councilmember, City Staff Member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on the informational items?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our informational items, I1, City Council Agenda Topics, I2, Preliminary Review of City-Owned Buildings Leased to Third Parties, I3, Acela Civic Platform Update, I4, An Update on the City's Five-Year Street Maintenance Plan, or I5, Park and Recreation Commission Recommendations for the Aquatics Program. Please engage that hand feature. Now, if you are participating via Zoom, if you're calling in from a landliner cell phone, please press star nine. Participating in person, complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me here at the clerk's desk. Okay, currently see one raised hand. So this will be the final call for public comment on our informational items I1 through I5. All right, I will be turning to Ross Silverstein. And Ross, if you can let us know which item you're commenting on. Ross, you should be able to unmute your microphone at this time.
Got it. Can you guys all hear me?
Yes, and if you can let us know which item you're speaking on.
I'm, I'm here to speak about the street resurfacing plan. I just want to remind City Council and the Public Works, to whatever extent we feel it possible to use our street resurfacing as an opportunity to establish and fill out the, the concept around complete streets and Vision Zero. I know that that is part of our Vision Zero Action Plan. And I know that it hasn't been utilized to its fullest extent to date. And so as we are thinking about which streets are going to be resurfaced to, instead of just doing it exactly as we have the streets today, to actually use that opportunity to put in either traffic calming or other elements, be it sidewalks, bike lanes, anything that would improve pedestrian safety on these various streets as per our various plans that we've already passed and already said we're going to do. Let's just make sure that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ross. And we had an additional hand raised, going to Kevin Rennie. And if you could, let us know which item you're speaking on.
Councilmember's staff, I'm speaking on item I4, the resurfacing plan. And to echo Mr. Silverstein's comments, with the resurfacing, take further action to implement Transportation Master Plan. There's a sidewalk master plan also involved, Vision Zero Action Plan, and the new state law, AB 413, the daylighting law, also traffic calming as needed in those areas. And to that point, with Vision Zero, I had written a note, a comment to City Council about one particular area on Woodland, about, I think it's this close to the 600 block between, close to the Middlefield, there's been two houses built there. There's Memo Park Walkway Standards, using CAD, using drill hyphen one, that was not followed when I followed up with the, the planning department. They said they were unaware of this. Kind of like the City Council will follow up with that, or the planning department commented that there is drainage and that's the reason there was no improvements done. It's a, it's very, it's blocked by a lot of people and it's extremely dangerous. There's some, it's a curvy road. There's some situations where there's no place to walk other than the road and a curb. I thank you for your time and keep providing some attention to this. I yield back.
Thank you for your comment. All right, seeing no further hands or cards. Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you. Are there any City Council comments on the informational items? All right, we will move on to the City Council initiated items. In accordance with the City Council Procedures Manual, the following agenda item is to be considered by the City Council. City Council members can ask staff questions regarding preliminary scope, analysis, resource requirements, and overall prioritization of future City Council agenda items based on the citywide work plan. After discussion with a motion and second, the City Council may take one of the following actions. Preparation of a formal staff report with a determined level of staff resources and timing for City Council consideration, or advisory body preparation of a formal staff report with a predetermined level of staff support, or consideration at the City Council's annual priority and goal setting process. The City Council initiated item is Request by Mayor Combs for a Future Agenda Topic. To introduce the item is Mayor Drew Combs.
Thanks, Vice Mayor Nash. I, I think the request pretty much speaks for itself. But to just give additional context, or to double click into, into the context, the request is that the council revisits the current closure to vehicular traffic on the, the block of Santa Cruz that extends from Starbucks to, to, to the Left Bank Restaurant. Currently, the, there, there is an allowance or right-of-way for, for bicycle, but there are now sort of K-Rails, concrete barriers, that section off the rest of, of, of that area of Santa Cruz. And so there are parklets there, which are in front of the Bistro Vita and extending all the way down to, to, to Left Bank. But then in addition to the parklet is, is right-of-way that has been sectioned off. And then that, again, that extends and creates a, a larger space in front of, of, of the Walgreens Starbucks area. We landed on this closure as, as a holdover from the pandemic. During the pandemic, different portions of the pandemic, more extensive portions of Santa Cruz were closed to vehicular traffic. And then we successively sort of opened more of the street up. And, and this is what remains. I think as a lot of us are aware, the business community has, in the downtown area, has continuously expressed concern that this blocks the flow of traffic and thereby has a, a, you know, a negative impact on, on their business. Obviously, this is their impression. I, I don't know that anyone has specific data proving that out, but, but it is something that the business community has been fairly consistent about. I would add that one of the other reasons for bringing this up is that, again, this isn't part of any, any pilot or, or information gathering exercise that the city is engaged in. It's just sort of there and looks fairly temporary. And I'd also add that there hasn't been any additional like sort of analysis or understanding or attempt to have traffic flows comport in a way that reflects that, you know, a portion of a street that people think you could drive through, you can't drive through. And what I would mean is things like, you know, further up Santa Cruz, like something saying like no access to El Camino or other, other things that you would think that would exist if, if there was, if this was a permanent sort, sort of closure. And so anyway, so that's, I, I think it is ripe for, for a, you know, a council discussion, which is why I initiated this, this item. With that, I'll pause. And I guess-
Pardon me?
No, I guess I was going to say, I don't know, do I open, if it is, if it's like a staff report, do I say I'll, I'll take any questions now? If there are-
I think right now, City Clerk Karen, could we see if we have any public comment on informational item? Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item J1, request by Mayor Combs for a future agenda topic related to Santa Cruz Avenue. If you are in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table. If you are joining us via Zoom, engaging that hand feature. Calling in from a landliner cell phone, please press star nine now. Currently have two raised hands, three raised hands. So this will be the final call for a public comment on our City Council initiated item J1. All right. So we have a total of three hands and our first speaker will be Colette.
Hi, I just had a comment, or actually, I was hoping you could provide context in relation to the closure. I know it was initiated during COVID, so I'm just curious, what was the plan with that? Was it to eventually reopen it and at what time? And, or to make it a permanent closure? And how the businesses feel if they're, if they, it sounds like they don't really like it because of the flow of traffic and potential loss of parking? So I'm just wondering who will make the decision on either making it more of a permanent closure or reopening it? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, and our next speaker will be Kevin Rennie, followed by an iPad user, too.
Again, to Councilmembers' staff, I also sent in a comment. I'm in support of leaving partial closure of the cars until more, a more holistic approach is reviewed for all of downtown. I live in the Willow's neighborhood. I ride our bikes through Burgess Park to get downtown. It's far-centric for the most part. We do sometimes make our way to Hillview and we started using Santa Cruz for the most part on Sundays. There's no real good way to get onto the other side of Memo Park. It's extremely unsafe. I'm hoping at some point, middle, we can use middle, you know, instead of having to go over the train tracks and all the way over the middle and then down middle and then cross back over. At this point, it's, it would be nice if there's more effort given to the transportation plan and complete the streets approach, which considers all transportation users, including people who have bikes, scooters, and other forms of traffic. I, I just don't currently see, I see some of this happening, but it's just, it's just not enough. And to take away this little nugget that we got out of a desperate situation through COVID, it would be a bit, it would be a bit sad if we just kind of, you know, we do that. I yield back, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, and then our final speaker is telling in from an iPad. And if you wouldn't mind stating your name before your comment.
Hi, this is Alex Geltromer.
Thank you, Alex, go right ahead.
Great, good evening, Council. I know you're not deciding anything tonight, but I do want to say how happy I am about even the prospect of reopening the closed portion of Santa Cruz Avenue. The ability to, to drive all the way down Santa Cruz Avenue is sort of the linchpin of how our downtown works. In addition, those diagonal parking spaces in front of Walgreens are of immense value to our community. So I, I would urge Council to not complicate this. The, the first step should be to simply restore that block to functioning in the same way as all the other blocks, where cars and bikes use the road, where pedestrians use the sidewalks, and where the parking spaces are either for parking or for outdoor dining in parklets. Once we've restored, once we've restored Santa Cruz Avenue to functioning as it should, then we can consider ways to accommodate the activities that were going on in the road closure. If we really feel that the downtown needs more public space, places to sit, then we can look at the best locations for more public seating. If we feel that we need to provide more places for middle school kids to gather after school, then let's think about the best ways of doing that. Perhaps we could add picnic tables and vending machines to Fremont Park and other parks near schools. Those are community issues that have answers and we can find them. But if we want our downtown to be vibrant, then it must first be successful as a business district. And for it to be successful as a business district, it must be easy to navigate and easy to park. There's a lot we can do to better support our business district. But the lowest hanging fruit by far is to simply reopen the road. Let's start with that and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, seeing no further hands or cards. Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Thank you. I would now like to open for council discussion.
Can I chime in again real quick?
Please, Mayor Combs.
Yeah, in, in an attempt to respond to Colette, the first public commenter, I think if I remember correctly, one question was like, is what's, what's the plan or strategy? And I, I think there isn't one now. And so this, this is what partly has initiated this, a council member initiated item to, to see if there should be a plan or strategy as it relates to this, this specific closure, long-term speaking. And I think her second question was like, who, who decides? And, and again, I think the council decides like what, what's, what's to be done going, going forward with regards to, you know, to this, this portion of, of the street. I do want to acknowledge, which was referenced, and I think one or a couple of the public comments, that this, this space has emerged as a key community gathering spot. And I think it's great. I, I love seeing the, the kids there. And, and I do think that there is a possibility that, I, I do think that that still can be preserved by, again, like I just bringing in those K-Rells into like making them aligned with the parklet that is in front of, of, of Left Bank. And then that, that will provide, you know, through, through traffic, but then still preserve a, a space in, in front of, in front of Starbucks and Walgreens. Again, acknowledging that space will be smaller, but there, there is a way to, if, if the council wanted to go down that route and prioritize opening that, that portion of Santa Cruz back up. I, I think that there is still a way to preserve it as, as a community gathering spot. But I did want to acknowledge that it, it is a community gathering spot. I, I think it's, it's, it's great. And, and that is something that we should, whatever we do, I, I think that is something we, we should make, make it a priority to preserve.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Schmidt.
Well, one thing is, I wanted to thank Mayor Combs for adding this to the discussion on a number of things. I think we're on the same wavelength as this because I've been asking this question in some of the other discussions and debates we had around downtown and the future of downtown. I think I'd been thinking about it in a really different context, which was, I was hoping in our strategy setting or our priority setting meeting in a few weeks, to really fold this and other things into the context of an economic development and downtown revitalization strategy. So I'm super happy to open up this topic. I feel like we might miss an opportunity if we bring it up separately. It might create a sort of separate set of debates around this. And but I'd love to sort of see it folded in because I think we have to answer the questions that Mayor Combs brought up about community gathering spots, what do we do with the farmer's market, what other improvements? You know, I see it as a very positive entry point into a broader engagement strategy. So I think my only objection to this is, and I want to also make sure we recognize that people who have invested in this, you know, Ali Abisravita was a driving force behind, you know, this being able to make things like this happen as well. So I wouldn't want it to be unrecognized that there have been attempts to sort of help revitalize downtown by heroic efforts of individual business owners. So I would maybe ask the question, would we be willing to have the discussion, but part of a broader priority for the city around what are we going to do with downtown and economic development? And it could be one of the first things we discuss, but I'd love to just see it kind of folded in. And since it's only a few weeks away, I'm not really trying to deny it or delay it, but I would, yeah. So anyway, sorry, I feel like I'm the hours late and I'm rattling a little bit. But yeah, just, that's what I would ask if we could consider as well.
If I could chime back in again in response to councilmember Schmidt. I'm not necessarily opposed to that idea, but I do have some concerns that this gets lost. So when you think of like sort of, you know, downtown economic development, there are things like, you know, very specific efforts to attract and incentivize business that you might look from a, you know, economic development arm or like activity. And then separately, there are like what I would say you would consider like sort of public works or infrastructure projects, like right? To make the hardscape look better, more accessible, create, you know, different gathering spots. Like either one of those efforts are sadly long term. I would, I mean, even if you scale back, like some of the sort of, like sort of hardscape improvements, like right, that's not on the city's radar at all, like right, that's not something error in staff's radar, as far as I understand. That's not even something like they have signaled a frame up in any way. And so it would seem as to me like the issue of whether the street returns to normal or not could get lost in that larger discussion. Again, it's not something I'm opposed to, but I do think that that is something that, you know, comes to mind. I do think it is also important that you know, the business community centered around downtown and Santa Cruz have felt especially ignored by city council for some time now, right? And again, I wouldn't say that all businesses downtown like are in favor of opening a street, but certainly I think a large number. And to be clear, I don't even know if I'm in favor of opening the street. Like I'm of two minds and I think I go back and forth on this issue. But I do think it is, it is important that, and I know councilmember Schmidt, it is your hope and my hope too, that this larger discussion about downtown begins to show that, not only that we're being responsive to that community, but that we all think downtown is important and needs to, can be better, like right, in a number of ways and can be better supported by the city. And so I would just offer that. Like I say, this is something I did want to bring to council. But it is something that, like I say, I wrestle with myself.
I just wanted to respond to your response. That's okay. I actually think that that's a really good point about getting lost. And I guess just a procedural question for our priority setting meeting. If we did vote for downtown revitalization to be one of our top priorities as a city, would we have the ability to, to Mayor Combs' point, would we have the ability to do some sub-prioritization in there as well, so it doesn't get lost and say, hey, one of the first three topics we want to cover is the, this issue in particular? Would that level of specificity be okay in kind of guiding the city?
I think that's certainly a possibility. Typically, what happens after the top goals are selected by the council, then the city staff actually develop the work plan around those goals. So if there is discussion at the workshop around what is, what you're most interested in with, if, you know, the topic of downtown was selected, then, you know, we could definitely work that into the work plan.
Yeah, that's perfect. I think it's more about consolidating the discussion, so we're not having lots of separate discussions, but we have a almost a master plan kind of discussion with some prioritization like the mayor had mentioned. So, okay, thank you.
City Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash. I'm interested in having this discussion at goal setting. Just looking at what our priorities already are, our downtown area is on there, improving the area and addressing concerns around pedestrian access and community spaces. So I think this definitely belongs at goal setting. Thank you.
So I also would like to see it contemplated as part of a larger envisioning of downtown that includes both the infrastructure, how we are just, what do we want downtown to look like? What do we want it to be? And I think that it would be a mistake to do this separately. And even separately as part of the goal setting, I think it really has to be viewed as a major cohesive effort. There are some discussions in the community that are ongoing right now, and perhaps that will come up at goal setting. I personally think that, as has been said, I think by others, that yes, the first priority is to make downtown economic development, put it back on the priority list. It was off last year since we decided to have four priorities rather than five. But I do think it definitely is something that we need to discuss. But I would like to see it very much as part of a larger vision.
I'm also in favor of having it at goal setting. So at this point, should, I'm happy to make a motion. So motion to have this discussion at goal setting. Does that work? For everyone?
I guess the one question that I have is, but maybe this is the discussion at goal setting, is whether it's a one-off item or part of this more cohesive discussion. But I guess, yes, to have it at goal setting, that will be the discussion. Thank you. And I would be happy to second.
Thank you. So I have.
If I could, again, aligned with, was bringing this back up to goal setting. I will only say again, separate from some of the other things about downtown, this was what you might consider an artificial change that council put in. That, and so it's not like, oh, we have some empty storefronts. It's a change that council made without any real analysis or understanding of the impacts of the change. And so I do think, and it's a change that by its very nature, looks and feel temporary, but has lingered on for years. And so I would push on council, I'm fine for it to go to goal setting, but like, I do think that there needs to be sort of, at some point, regular, because again, like I've been here long enough, I remember the downtown specific plan, right? And that was supposed to revitalize Santa Cruz. It did not. And so I do think, because this is something that has been an artificial ad, I would say, by council, without any real understanding of the ripple effects of it, I do think I would push on my colleagues that we can send it down the goal setting process, but there should be some regular check-in, like right? Because at some point, we should have a sign that says that there is no access to El Camino at some point on Santa Cruz, like right? Those are things that should have happened when we put this in, when we let this be a stub that's left over and it didn't happen. We just like, oh, we're going to close the street, but we're going to let it still continue to exist everywhere else to make it seem as though the street is a through street. And that's something I just would push on us, but that like, I'm again, fine with it going to go setting, but it is something that like, if we're six months out or nine months out and this is like sort of nowhere, then I will bring it back and say, hey, again, there is this artificial thing that we've done and we still have not done any of the due diligence to kind of understand and mitigate some of the effects that came with it. Thank you. We can proceed to the vote. Sorry.
Oh, no, that, I think that's a very fair request, and I think that's absolutely something we should discuss when we discuss this more broadly.
One more thing to add on. I also agree. I didn't want to reopen the specter of us resetting the downtown specific plan. My hope is it doesn't turn into a, I feel like it's a series of tangible actions. We can discuss it in March, but I definitely echo this is a series of actions versus a, you know, two-year planning process, and I'm hoping we go down. Thanks.
So I would just say a couple of things. One is, there's many pieces of the downtown specific plan that have never been implemented. So I think that that's something to at least state that it wasn't, we haven't achieved it because we have not tried to do much of it. Another piece is just that there was, this has come before council since COVID. We have considered it again and staff did write a report about it. It does not have all the metrics that we're discussing. But it has been seriously considered and there was a tremendous community support for this closure. And I think especially since the transportation, our transportation group has done a fantastic job of re-envisioning the bike lane there and putting the stop sign there. And I think that it really is working much, much better than it was before. And I may be missing it, but I no longer see kids riding the wrong way on the other side of the street, which was a regular occurrence. Now they are truly using the bike lane, sometimes in both directions.
Yes, they're riding the wrong way in the bike lane.
Right.
But I guess that can improve it maybe.
But it is being used and keeping them, keeping people safer and out of the traffic. So I will stop.
Councilmember Taylor.
Oh, I believe we're ready to vote.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I have a motion on the floor by city council member Wise and a second by Vice Mayor Nash to include the consideration of the Santa Cruz Avenue closure at the city council's annual priority and goal setting process. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, city council member Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
City council member Schmidt.
Yes.
City council member Wise.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to city manager report with city manager Justin Murphy.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. So this evening, I'd just like to emphasize that the National Weather Service is forecasting an impactful storm event through Friday with heavy rain on Thursday and strong winds on Thursday to Friday. We could potentially see ponding on roadways, down trees, trees and limbs, power outages. So stay informed with how to prepare for storms on the city website at menlopark.gov/storms. That's menlopark.gov/storms and follow us on social media for the latest information. And then I would also like to encourage community members to register for Menlo Park Fire District's Next Community Emergency Response Team or CERT Academy, which will start in March. This is a hands-on training in basic disaster preparedness, fire extinguisher usage, disaster medical care, first aid training, and search and rescue techniques, as well as neighborhood team building. You can find more information at menlofirecert.com. The city of Menlo Park is grateful for the assistance from CERT volunteers who played important roles in previous storms and went door to door checking on residents without power. So appreciation to CERT, which is run by the Menlo Park Fire Protection District. So those are updates for this evening.
Thank you. Are there any reports from city council members since the January 28th city council meeting? All right, we are adjourned.